Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the January 22nd, 2019 informal work session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. On our agenda today, we do have two work sessions, or we don't have a work session scheduled, but we do have two department.
I'm not trying to pull it away.
We do have two department updates scheduled. One that's on your agenda from our treasurer, Mike Green, and then another one from Gary Wertz, our fair manager. So let me first turn it over to Mike Green. So Mike, if you want to come forward and give your report.
Thank you for letting me join this for a week. A little less effective. Is that all? I'll try to go quickly. I noticed you had a full agenda, and we covered a lot of this in the prior meeting. Quick update, we're through the first half of the fiscal year. Overall earnings for the county between investments and LGIP are up approximately $200,000 over the prior six months in fiscal year. Right now, we're a little over $600,000, about $630,000 in earnings. I am anticipating that the total earnings for the fiscal year will be probably around 1.4 million, which is a little bit more, I think, than what we had originally budgeted. And we're probably working on numbers for next fiscal year, but I would assume it's slightly higher. The reason for that primarily is the fact that we're investing more and we're getting a better return on our investment. LGIP is at 2.56%, and in January, we actually just gone up to 2.75%, and the overall investment portfolio is just slightly under 2.4%. So we're literally up 20 basis points over where we were this time last year. So that's the reason for it. So I'll go quickly. Bond market is very interesting. It continues to go upward. I think you've probably heard about the inverse curve, which means primarily that older bonds are not getting as good a return as younger bonds. But generally, between the prior quarter, when I talked to you, and this quarter, that two- to five-year bond market for the same duration is up about 10 basis points. And so we've been taking advantage of it. Under old business, core rate of inflation, something we report on our investment committee for the fiscal year or the calendar year that just ended, it was 2.2%. It's actually come down from a high this summer. And that's good news because we're actually getting more than 2.2%. So our money's earning more than what the rate of inflation is. We're actually doing well that way. So I think that's a good thing. As far as cash balances that we track, there are five major funds. They are still tracking with a cash balance in excess of $20 million. Again, I bring that up only from the standpoint that as you're going through the budgeting process, that if that money can be looked at in a different way, classify it more as longer duration, we have some more flexibility. Last but not least, unless you have questions on the numbers, because I know you sat through over an hour patiently the last time we talked, a week ago, two recommendations came out of the investment committee. One is we're subject to our annual review of our investment policy. That's part of what's required by the State Treasurer's Office. There was no real recommendations made as far as the overall investment philosophy. But one of the things that did occur is that we have had an opening on the investment committee for some time. We had three very qualified, extremely qualified candidates. And I met with all three of them and liked all three of them. And I think the county would be well-served by having them participate in this committee. So a recommendation that was made by the investment committee is to change the number of members on the investment committee from five to seven. And that is in here as a potential board action. If they're, if you're willing to do that, then what I would also recommend is that the board also approve all three of those candidates as members of the investment committee.
Okay, we have, we have those listed under our non-consent agenda.
Were they adequate descriptions, Ken, for what you needed?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we have everything we need.
Okay, so unless you have questions, that's.
Casey, you have any questions for Mike?
No. I was, it was familiar, everything you sent to us, from the investment committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Mike.
Allow me to defer.
Thanks for coming to our end of the county and doing this.
Thanks for feeling.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, if that means that, we'll move on to our next department update. Gary, you want to come on forward, tell us a little bit about the Fair and Event Center and what's happening?
Good afternoon, everyone. As all of you know from our last time I was here, that 2018 was a good fair and one of our biggest, biggest fairs in 165 years that the Yamhill County's had at fair. 2019 is on par with what 2018 is. The Delashment Arena, which is our gym, is actually booked at least 44 weekends last year, and we're already taking bookings into 2022 for it. So it's a pretty busy building. And they're just not equine events. There's a lot of other events that want to use it. So we're diversifying our portfolio a little bit, you know, on rounds. And so we don't have to just depend on one species to survive.
Gary, what kind of, what kind of other events, other than equine events, what kind of other events are we booking into the arena?
Well, there's a, actually, there's a goat show where they're coming in. There's also a group, they call them farm shows, it's antiques, that type of stuff that want to rent the arena because it's big enough. You know, one of the few buildings, they're affordable and big enough in the county.
Yeah.
So we just roll the dirt, they put their booths in. We've had a couple of, we don't hold motorized events in there, but we've had a couple other different type of things that want to use the facility. Even, we had a soccer team in there last fall, so, that we're practicing in there a couple hours a night.
Gary, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, are those farm shows in addition to the Overland Expo?
Those are more like flea market type of thing. You know, people buy a booth and these, you have an organizer, just similar to gun shows or any of that, you know. Organizer sells booth space and people buy those booths, and they follow a certain show around, you know, on a circuit. What I attribute some of that to is that Washington County has torn down their big buildings, and they're building that big 45,000 square foot building up there. So some of those shows are trying to come out here, and one of them actually said that they were already looking at coming out of Yamhill County, and this was the best place for them, so.
And what's the frequency of those shows?
Frequency is about once or twice a year right now. We've had, we've had them in the Lewis Pavilion, you know, two or three times a year, smaller ones. Some of those are just, you know, are going away into where these bigger ones, there's one being advertised now in Portland that's a huge one. It's called the, I forget what it is, but anyway, that's, it's just, you know, it's an antique, flea market is what it is. Doesn't affect anything with what we have to do with the, you know, the expo. But it's all small stuff, you know, from, you know, not so much, they call them farm shows, but it's more household type of stuff.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay. So Lewis Pavilion, we're still holding it about 25 weekends out of the year. Plus, we have picked some weekly, during the week, just recently, we held a, first responders' training session was held there where they were, first responders from all over the state came, learned how to rescue livestock out of, you know, wells, ditches, ponds, that type of stuff. Along with the, there is a regional chicken show, believe it or not, that wants to rent the building. So we're going to rent it. We're all, you know, the fairgrounds is looking pretty, like we're going to be pretty busy in 2019, to the point that Travel Oregon and Travel McMenville have scheduled meetings with us to discuss what's happening out the fairgrounds, when they finally, when they realize that just how much we do to the local economy with the events that we hold out there. You know, and it's still holding at about $7.5 million, so, according to Oregon State. So we're pretty happy about that. The big one is, here in a few months, we have the Pacific Overland Expo that we're partners with the Anvil Academy. And that one, we've just actually, just this morning, took a call from someone from Nevada who has, what was it, 12 rigs they want to bring up here for this one. So, and we're talking, you know, semi-hauling carriages and that type of stuff up here from Nevada. So we're pretty happy about that. It's come together. That'll be a big event, this is the third time. So on Friday, if any of you have time, Wells Fargo is bringing their stagecoach again to give free rides around the fairgrounds. So we're pretty happy about that, how that's come along. The future, the fairground, the fairwork, myself, are doing, we're just in the first phases, we're trying to come up with a master plan. It's long overdue, things that any type of master plan was done 20-some years ago, and it wasn't much of one. So we're trying to come up with that. We're just in the first phases and talking and getting ideas how to go about doing that. So, you know, as we go along with 27 acres in the future, we need to make sure that we use the property right and locate everything and keep the open spaces open, because, believe it or not, the open spacers are also selling the facility. To quote, we had at the fair, I've had the president, the IAFC, came to our fair, and the first thing she said, "You're one of the few fairgrounds in the nation that have trees. Everything else has been cut off, you know, cut down, unpaked." And she said that it's perfect, and that's what we, you know. So those are some of the things that the master plan address. And we still can, we're still working on the goal of preventative maintenance instead of reactionary maintenance. It's getting better. There's always something with buildings that were built in the 40s and on up into the 80s. There's always going to be some, a surprise or two. We do have the entertainment booked for the fair. I can't release the names yet, but one of them is a national, two of them are national known acts. We just, and then also, this will be the 21st rodeo that we've had out there, and the 10th construction derby, and along with all the exhibits. So I think it's going to be another busy, busy year. That's what we're there for. Along with the city of McMenville is going to use the front lawn again for archery, for the parks department. So pretty, I'm pretty excited, pretty excited how things are going.
Any questions for Gary?
Thank you, Gary.
The only comment I have, Gary, is that I think, you know, well, when Al was there, but especially now since you stepped in, you know, I've always looked at the fairgrounds as one of those, or the jewels of Yamhill County that no, the best jewel that nobody ever knew about.
Yep.
Well, it's become very evident now that everybody is knowing about it. And what, you know, if we look at like the, a lot of the events we're holding in the arena, inside in Delashment and everything, how, how do really, do you know an idea how we compare with rates compared to that others that would hold similar kind of events?
Well, part of our attractiveness, as one, is our building's old. So our rates are comparatively speaking to what the building is. Now, with that said, if you compare us to, you know, Albany's arena, the arenas that are available were a lot less. It did last, something that hadn't been done in 14 years, I did raise the rates. You know, water, gas, all that's gone up. And, you know, when I start looking at what we're paying, you know, for care of the building, and our rates are still reflecting, you know, 10-year-old, 20-year-old prices. So we are raising the rates up, but comparatively speaking, you're taking a building like ours, which is 700 a day compared to Albany's, Lynn County's, which is 1600 a day. But then you've got a building that's 10 years old, and you've got a building that's, you know, 60 years old, in two different types of buildings. I mean, basically, the arena floor is the same, but, you know, one can hold probably 4,000 people, and the other one can only hold, you know, 2,000.
Well, the only reason I say that, because I'm definitely for keeping us competitive and not raising our rates.
Right.
Not much, but I'm also definitely for raising them to the point which sounds like you're working on, where we could recover some of the cost of maintenance, to do some of that deferred maintenance that has been put off for so long, because some of those buildings, and I say I have to commend you on this, because some of our buildings were basically falling down around us, so. But you've done a great, you've done a great job out there, and the fair board's done a very good job.
Thank you, but it's just, it's been labor of love all this time, but.
Well, you've been in it long enough, so.
And I really look at, you know, tearing a building down isn't always the answer. I mean, a lot of people don't know that, you know, two of the buildings were there before the war for the cavalry when they traded out. That's why the fairgrounds is there in the first place. And those buildings actually are a lot better shape than the newer ones.
Yeah.
But, so, yeah, we've got to keep it, we've got to, you know, my goal is to keep our rates not, you know, we don't need to be the highest, but we don't need to be the cheapest. I want to keep it, you know, market value, which will help us take care of the buildings. But, you know, we're competing, you know, you've got to understand, we are competing against buildings that are 10 years newer than what we are, plus private facilities, which I don't want to compete against private facilities. But we, there's some private facilities, you know, one down Eugene, and a couple up towards the Hillsborough area that are a lot, a lot more than us still. So, you know, it's, it's affordable, especially when you get the high school equestrian teams, that's our big one that we're going to be stepped into here in the next month.
Yeah.
For three months. I mean, that's a big income producer for us.
Well, I think it's not just what we bring in for the county. I think for less whatever, the amount, the amount we bring into the economy is such a boon to our economy locally that it makes a big difference.
We have, I have at least four McMenville businesses that have us send, have us send our calendar over each month, so they know what's going on. You know, two of them are restaurants, and two of them are feed stores. They want to know what's going on because they, they depend on us, what we have going on. And a lot of others have started recognizing that. I know some people on Main Street actually said that to me here the other day. She says, "I know when there's an event going on at the fairgrounds." And she says, "I'm busy with all their wives."
Smart, smart thinking.
So, anyway, so that's what's going on.
Okay, anything, anything more for Gary?
Call me anytime or come out.
We will. And I'll set up a meeting with you, Gary, Gary immediately is on with the fair, so thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, that will take us into our preliminary consent agenda, then. We have three things on, we have our minutes, and a particular contract, or an intergovernmental agreement, and a reappointment to Philip Griffin to the HAYC Board of Commissioners. So is there any questions on the consent agenda? If none, I'll entertain a motion, that we approve it?
We don't do a motion at informal.
Oh, that's right. We don't do a motion.
We just move it to the consent agenda.
We move it to the.
I'm learning.
It's, it's already, yeah.
Right.
It's already there. So approval, then?
Sure.
You wouldn't take a vote, you would just decide if you wanted to leave those items on the consent agenda, or if you wanted to remove any of them?
Oh, that's right, because this is a combined, that's right, this is a combined, so we want to leave them all on the consent?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Fine with me.
Thank you.
I'll stay on the consent agenda.
You got that easy, huh?
Okay, we have several non-consent agenda items, other top, and other topics for discussion. So the first one is consideration of amending the Yamhill County investment policy, changing section 5(c)(3), which you might explain to standards of care from five to seven voting members from three citizens to five citizens. So, any discussion on that? Casey?
I, I think it makes sense. I think the candidates that are there are, are great, and I also think that we have, it's great to have more different voices on there, so.
Okay, so we want to move that to consent, everybody want to move that to the consent agenda? Okay, we'll move that one to the consent agenda. Item number two is consideration of approval of the appointment of Chris Bloodsoe, Diane Edwards, and Jim Schopfeld to the investment committee for a three term through August 6/22. That's what Mike was telling us about, so do we want to move that to consent agenda?
I would just, at this point, Commissioner Kula, I think that it would be appropriate to disclose the relationship of one of the applicants for the investment committee.
Well, I was, what I wanted to ask about is, so Chris Bloodsoe is my mother-in-law. Christian, do I recuse myself, or, I mean, we, we can move it to the consent agenda without me objecting, so.
Correct, yeah, I don't believe you'd have to recuse yourself, but we can talk further if you have questions about whether or not it creates a potential or an actual conflict of interest for you.
But moving it to the consent agenda is a difference.
Not a problem.
Okay, so, okay, so let's move that one to the consent agenda. Number three is consideration of declaring tax lot R4416DC00502, and that's the one located at 1235 Northeast 14th Street, McMenville, Oregon, and all the improvements thereon to be surplus property and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the property to the Yamhill County Mission, an Oregon public benefit corporation in amount of $10,591.31, plus closing costs and fees. Mary, you have any comments?
No, I just want to thank Christian for all the work that he put into this. This has been a long process, just because it needed to be a different nonprofit without religious affiliation. And the fact that the Mission is now going to be able to take this property is, I think it's exciting, and thank you for.
Sure.
Working through this whole effort.
The only question I have, Christian, is their official name, the Yamhill County Mission now?
It is. They formed a new public benefit.
Corporation.
Corporation to hold this property, that's my understanding.
Okay. So then we'll move that to the consent agenda? Okay, we'll move that to the consent agenda. The fourth thing is consideration declaring the following tax lots, one, which is R4307BA04500, which is located at 954 East 5th Street in Lafayette, Oregon, and number four, number R3717CC0128, located at 1130 Church, Church Street, let me get back up here, located 1130 Church Street.
Dayton. That's in Dayton.
Located 303 Second Street, Dayton, Oregon. Those two located, 210 Ash Street, Willamina.
Yeah, Mr. Chris, Mr. Chair, there's actually four properties.
In that one, in that one.
We're looking at, it's tax lots, R6701DB07600, located at 210 Ash Street in Willamina, R4317AD01400, located at 303 Second Street, R4307BA04500, located at 954 East 5th Street in Lafayette, and R4317CC01028, located at 1130 Church Street in Dayton. Those are all properties that were obtained by the county through the property tax foreclosure process. The housing authority has expressed an interest, and they're ready to move forward with the purchase of those properties if the commissioners are still interested in continuing what has been an ongoing practice of trying to find partners who might be able to make use of these properties for low-income housing purposes.
And we'll access that as surplus property and authorize execution of purchase and sale agreements for the sale of those properties to the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation, a public benefit corporation under the Oregon Nonprofit Corporation, and the amounts to be negotiated, so should we?
And I don't have the agreements, but they'll be based on our previous agreements, and I'm confirming the amounts with the assessor's office, unless we're given other direction from the board. Those amounts would be the same that we've charged for other similar properties, which is the same amount that the prior owner would have been able to redeem the property for had they come on the last day of the two-year redemption period.
And that's plus cost, plus costs and closing, correct?
Up to that point.
Up to that point.
But not any other costs and fees that would have been incurred since then, or interest.
Okay, so we should move that to the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move that one to the consent agenda.
Sure, we can talk more about it.
Yeah. Okay, now, we have other items for discussion to see if we want to move them to the consent agenda. And the first one, I'll turn it over to Ken, it's discussion on work session scheduling and process. So Ken?
Yeah, and I think a lot of these, or a few of these are going to be discussion items. The first one is number five, and I, with the number of requests and discussion items, and in the past, last year, we did have a session to where we scheduled a work session to where we basically calendared out what our work session schedules, if there was consensus from the board on specific topics. And the nice part with that is, you know, getting this process refined a little bit is that if there's anything that requires staff to follow up on, it gives us sufficient time to pull data and have information available prior to that work session, depending on how it works. And so I asked to put this on here to possibly schedule a work session to schedule work sessions, you know, you know, because I'm just trying to, you know, as the incoming administrator, you know, trying to find some ways that we can improve the processes, and with the items that are coming before the board, you know, they're going to require a little more discussion and a little more planning ahead of time. So I'd like to see your interest in scheduling, you know, a first work session, to sit down with a calendar and kind of pencil out some topics and, and get it on the schedule.
Okay, Mary?
I appreciate that. Ken, because when, when there are a lot of items, it, it could tend to make the meetings go really long, whereas if we could piece them out, we'd only have maybe two or three, and then be able to not rush through it because there's other pressing meetings. But I appreciate that we would discuss what it's going to be, we'd have some time to think about it, get input, and then talk about it without there being so many at once.
Casey?
I think it's a great idea to get things scheduled out. The thing I can anticipate is that items come up that we might want to talk about, but we don't have a calendared work session for, because we've already calendared out some other thing.
Well, I, I think personally, that's one of the reasons of doing this, because if we can calendar out a lot of things we know about, that'll give us time in our meetings to discuss those things that may come up that we may not really have time to put on a calendar. And I know when I was elected two years ago, and working with staff and Laura my first year, to get the whole idea of the work session onto our meetings, so we can pinpoint those things, that we say, okay, maybe here's something that's going to, maybe we want to schedule this for the third week in February, or the first week in March, or whatever. So it gives staff and the commissioners a lot more time to look at it, give it some thought. So I think, Ken, that was a very good idea, and I think we should probably schedule that first, schedule that first one, to look at those kind of issues, because I'm sure there will be more in the next couple, next couple of weeks, so we can look at those and decide, and get them on the calendar, so we do know what we have work, work schedules. So I think, I don't think there's any, I think we gave, we don't need to discuss, I think we gave staff direction on what we'd like him to do on that, so.
Okay.
Ken, if you want to schedule that first one out, where we can talk about a lot of those kind of things and look at what we have, because I know, looking at some of the commissioners' personal goals that they gave me before I became chair, there's some items that, once I share them with you, because I still have to put a few in there, some that Commissioner Sterrett gave me, Commissioner Kula gave me, and some of ours, that would be a good input for that, to see how we want to schedule those in on work sessions.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So I'm, you know, not sure how soon the board would like to schedule this, you know, if you want some time to go through your lists, if we want to schedule it as early as next Tuesday and have a dedicated work session for this.
How about the first week in February? How does the first week in February, that 11?
Well, we have one work session, I believe, was February 5th, where we were going to, I don't have a calendar.
Isn't that next week, February?
No, we have one.
I hope not.
We'll have to schedule, schedule.
That's in two weeks. February 5th is in two weeks. And I know we have a discussion on the High Heaven Gate for that informal. Let me see, or how about February 12th?
I'd rather do it February 12th than do it right away, you know. I'd rather give you time to prepare for that.
Okay.
Let the commissioners, let me finish putting together what I'm putting together and give you, so you can look at that before you prepare it.
Okay, then, here in consensus, you know, February 12th, I'll get this put together, so that way we can.
Have all those items we wanted to work sessions on.
Right.
And there may be some where we can do a couple of the items, depending on what they are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Ken, so I think you have your directions where to move staff on.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item number six, and that's discussion, consideration of an inclusivity proclamation. And I know last we talked, Legal was going to do some wording, look at that and do some wording changes, and bring back another copy. Is that still in work, Christian?
You should have the revised document in the agenda.
Yeah, I was looking for this, and I don't see it there.
Oh.
And I actually can't find it in my own email.
And I actually can't find it in my own email now.
I didn't see it either, I just probably missed it though. Where you at? Just on our other business. That's a good place to put it.
I know, I got it.
Okay, Mary, have you had a chance to look at this yet?
I just had a couple of, I don't know if this is the time, or whether or not we should talk about it on Thursday, either keep it off the consent agenda for discussion on Thursday, or a couple of suggestions, or...
Commissioner Kula and I worked on the revised language, you're certainly free to, you know, discuss it, review it, read it now, talk about it, and then keep it off, or you can recommend that it be kept off now and defer that discussion until Thursday.
So do you like to provide your input now, Mary?
Sure, and, sure, absolutely. I think, if I'm understanding, Commissioner Kula, that this was, there were other cities that had done similar proclamations?
Correct.
And this is sort of patterned after those.
Correct.
I'd like to say that if we're going to do an inclusivity proclamation, that we not just follow what's been done, but that we set a, an example for what real inclusivity would be. And I know that in this county, we have become trailblazers for doing things, especially with Health and Human Services, with housing, with a variety of different, with community justice, a variety of recovering addiction issues, and I would like to see that we have that spirit in any inclusivity proclamation that we put together. So I would like to suggest that we would include, for instance, that we would include seniors, that we would include the unborn, that we would include business owners, property owners, taxpayers, people of faith, farmers, recovering addicts, community members who are just getting out of jail, so that what we do is foster parents, biological parents, people who, I'm looking in my, in the last almost five years of who has come with issues or concerns, those were the people who I felt that I was able to advocate for. And so I want to be able to say to everybody that when we do this in our county, we are not just going to pick and choose, we're going to basically say that anybody who has a concern is going to be covered in this statement.
That sounds good. I'm trying to pull up, sorry, the one that I got from Christian.
We did make a change to the first whereas clause that, and it before referred to contributing members of the community, I believe it now says all people. I don't know if that gets at some of what you were just discussing, or if you had some more, where you think it might fit.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, I just think, if we are going to call out anybody, that we actually make it a point to call out people in our community who might be, you know, feeling that they're, they haven't had particular advocacy, or that they had fear, as you mentioned, around contacting anyone in government, working with government. So if we're going to call out specific groups, let's not exclude anyone, but this would be real inclusivity.
Yeah, I definitely, I see some of those things within the statement, the, the language that's there, like it does say, regardless, for example, religion or economic status. And I think that that's, I think, I'm sure that we can include language that provides for what you suggest, too, because it is really important to me that everybody in our county knows that, and you have, you have set an example for working with people who feel like they are left out.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so I think that is, I think it's totally...
Yeah, the only thing I have to repeat is, I, two things, I like, is one thing Mary, one thing Mary said is that, like, in the paragraph two, where we have all people, regardless of race color, one thing that, when I first read this, it dawned on me, there's nothing in there about age, what's over, and you brought about the seniors, there's nothing in there that talks about age whatsoever.
Right now, it says age after religion. I apologize, I don't mean to. I just, it is, it is right there.
The reason I missed it, there's no common between age and economic status.
I think we just have one, right?
Yeah, but the reason I missed it, because there isn't a common between age and economic status. It looks like age economic status. But that's just a deal.
That may have been a transposition error.
Yeah, but what I was really happy about this is, and the one thing that I talked about the last meeting, and I think it was very good, and that therefore, item number three, where have access to use the county services in accordance with applicable laws, rules, and regulations, I think that was a very critical change to me, to ensure that we are following laws, we are following the regulations set forth, and we're not deciding to go out another way. But I think with the changes you suggested, Mary, I know if those kind of changes are made, I don't have any problem at all supporting this.
I really appreciate the, that you added this, and that such access is not illegally denied, conditioned, or withheld based upon, all those, and I thought that was a nice way to say, hey, we're not, we can do some things, but we're not, we're not going to deny you based upon these things.
Right.
Based upon this list of things, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's good.
So, do we want to direct Christian to work with Casey to make those additional
changes, include those things you might want to include?
I can send, I can send you and copy Christian.
I'm trying to get things.
Do you want me to say what they are now? Do you want me to go over that?
We've got them in the record.
You've got them in the record.
I can, I can.
You can send it to Christian, and he can include.
And then, yeah, I mean, that would be true for any of you, if you have other suggestions
Yeah, and then...
after the meeting today, just...
Yeah, then I think, then Thursday, I think we could probably...
I'll bring it back, and you can discuss it further on Thursday.
Yes, and Commissioner Kula, thank you for, for broaching this subject.
Thank you for...
I like it, I like it, Casey, very, very good. Okay, so we have, we've given staff direction on that one, the third...
Just to clarify, are we going to have this as an agenda item for Thursday?
To discussion and adoption, I like for discussion and adoption under other business.
Just keep it up.
Because then we'll see a product.
Yeah, it's just not on the consent agenda, because there's not the language.
I just want to confirm.
Yeah, that it's going to, it's going to say...
That we're going to have it on the agenda for Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, discussion, Casey, I think you put this on discussion regarding gate at High Heaven, High Heaven.
Exactly, and I, since it was my first formal meeting, I, I think that the language that I was using wasn't totally appropriate for what I was intending to do with the first meeting, which is that I was hoping to suggest to the board that we actually rescind the board order, is to permit the gate. And so I wanted to get that officially before you, that I think that we heard in a testimony about it.
So I think this...
But, yeah, I was going to say that there's also the, the issue of directing staff to develop a process for the keys, is what we last had.
Well, but I believe that in order to, you wanted to change your vote?
No, no, because the vote was on a motion, but I, the vote, there was a motion for a directing staff to develop a process for issuing keys.
And come back to us on the 4th or the 5th, wasn't it?
Right.
There was consensus that the, you know, that staff returned on the 5th.
With conditions for the permit.
For the permits.
Okay.
That's my understanding of what we...
Right, and then at that time, we could either determine whether we want to rescind the permit, or...
Is that, because I remember it being just about the issue of keys, and a process for keys.
Well, we were given direction, staff to come back.
Yeah.
But there was not a motion made at that time, nor was there a vote taken
Okay.
to do that, it was, you know...
I would have to go back and listen to it to remember exactly what was said, but I believe what, what I'd been working towards was coming back February 5th, I believe, with some suggested conditions to the permit, to try to address access through the gate and the issuance of keys. We can continue to do that, you could have this larger discussion then again at that time, and discuss whether or not those conditions might be acceptable, or if you're still interested in making a motion for the board to consider revoking the permit, basically, and leaving the gate open.
Right.
I, I don't recall that that specific option had been discussed at any length by the board. Certainly a topic that the board could choose to discuss now if you wanted, or we could wait until we came back with those suggested conditions to the permit, and use that as an opportunity to revisit
Sure.
the matter. It's really up to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I would still rather have the direction we gave staff to report back to us on the 5th, and then at that time, if we don't agree with those, or, you know, because Ken was going to care, contact warehouse, or if we don't agree with that, then we can entertain the motion, whether we want to, want to revoke the permit, or revoke the permit or not.
Okay, because I thought the process, the, what the direction we had given was just about the process of issuing keys, which would be different than, say, the, the process of opening the gate.
No, you're right, I think you're, I think you're right, and so that would be a whole separate thing, so, here's a, here's a list of conditions for, for keys.
Right.
And now, do we want to go to the next step?
Which would be opening the gate, revoking the permit.
Or, yeah.
Might be some other option.
There might be some other option as well, that doesn't yet exist.
Correct, every option is still on the table.
Right.
Leaving the permit as it is, revoking the permit entirely, modifying it with some new conditions, those are all still options, I believe.
Because if I'm not mistaken, if we modify, and we say, okay, warehouse, or here's some conditions we're putting on you, and they elect not to want those conditions, then it's, it's very easy to say, okay, fine, we're going to, we're going to revoke the permit.
Sure.
But I want to make sure everybody has a chance, because I don't know how this will, I don't know how this will turn out, so. So I'd still like to wait till the 5th, until staff comes back to us what their recommendations are.
That sounds good, and will we be able to, in, at that time, I kind of wanted to get John Phelan to weigh in, too, Director Phelan, since it's, it is a road issue, and I can't remember, I didn't see anything from him in the testimony in the public hearing.
No.
But he was...
I don't think there was.
Okay. Okay, I'm just curious what he has to say about it, so.
Yeah, I...
You're certainly free to talk with him
Okay.
outside of a meeting, get his input.
Right.
Because you are the public...
He could be president, yeah.
Yeah, because you are the public works layer, so you can feel free to do that.
Yep.
Either, either works. We'll try and make those, make sure those conditions are circulated far enough in advance that the...
Yeah, because I don't want this to...
John has some time to...
Either way, I don't want it to drag on for another month and a half, or...
Right.
I want to get it settled.
We'll aim to get those circulated next week, so.
Yeah, okay.
A full week.
Discussion of location commissioner, or location of commissioners' meetings. So Casey, is that one of yours?
That's right.
It's one of, and it's one of mine.
How did you know?
Well, I knew it was a mine, too, last year.
Was it one of yours?
Yeah.
I, let's see, I have some notes on that one, which is that there's been some conversation about whether the city of McMinnville might be willing to let us use the Kent Taylor Civic Hall for our regular board or commissioner meetings, and I wanted to see if we could start a formal process of directing staff to have that conversation. And the, the reasons that I can think of for that is, one, it is much more accessible, two, it's much more comfortable of a place, especially for folks who feel uncomfortable going through security and going into the courthouse. We, a long time ago, actually communicated about this, I just realized, because I was uncomfortable. And then, it, it provides a level of transparency of our meetings, because they're very open, you know, I might even see if I can get a signboard, so we can put it out. But then the, the benefit for the courthouse is that they are growing short on space here for their operations, and I hear that, no formal process, but I, I continue to hear that from the DA's office and from the judicial department. And so I wanted to, to bring it up to see if there was any interest from the two of you.
Mary?
I remember when you were mayor, Mr. Chair, I had, we had talked about that, because I was over there, you were helping me set up for a, I think it was a water task force. And we talked about that, and it seemed, on the surface, a good idea, and then I started thinking about a couple of things. Parking, if you've ever been to a meeting over there, that's just a little meeting, it really does fill up pretty quickly, and then you've got trying to park in that little downtown second street, third street area, which I've been late to meetings because of the parking situation. I think what we found in the past is that we think people don't come to our meetings for X, Y, Z reason, we've even gone to their cities and gone to their city council meetings, and typically people still won't come to your meetings, except if it's a hot button issue, and then they'll show up.
Right.
But typically, we'll sit here, and it'll just be us. The other thing about security is, I had some concerns about security initially.
Yeah.
And then I didn't, because, as, as you know, with what we do, it's sometimes controversial, and I feel like we are sort of vulnerable when we don't have the option of having that, that measure of security. So there's that component. If we're in the civic center, we really don't have that. The other thing is, I don't know whether it's their, their recordings, their recording setup has been problematic in the past.
Yeah, actually, it's really, really good, and we'd have to have our staff trained by their people, how to, you know, how to use it, but it's actually a very good, very good system, and for people that are hearing impaired, they actually have
Oh, they have that.
Bluetooth headsets that people can put on, so they can listen, they can listen to everything.
So the other concern I had was having to do with staff. I know that there will be times where we will literally have to have somebody run across the street with a document, or run across the street from planning, and I know with county council and with other staff, being able to run across the street at the 11th hour, even if we call them in the middle of a meeting, how many times have we called them, and people have, we've had people come over because we're discussing something we needed to have them there for? So I would not be in favor of it, I think it's, again, one of those prob, solutions in search of a problem, and I, I think it just, I don't know why we would necessarily have to do that, but that's just my...
Yeah.
Originally, I thought it was a good idea, and then I thought, ooh, maybe not.
Well, you know, part of my opinion is, is I do think it's a good idea, and to just address a couple of things, is security, the security, believe me, to get a police officer there, or somebody, because it's monitored by YCOM all, all the time, there's buttons under the Diaz, you know, and with you doing it, I tell you, you'll have a city police officer probably within a minute and a half, within a minute and a half.
And a minute and a half is a really long time, when someone is standing in front of you with perhaps the intention of doing you harm, whereas here, at least we can mitigate that to the degree where we don't have people maybe bringing weapons in, and so it's sort of an equal playing field. But if you go to a scenario where we're, we're sitting there, and, and you can tell me all day long, you've got a minute and a half for a police officer to show up, but a minute and a half is an eternity when you're facing potential danger.
And I, I agree with that, I think we don't necessarily gain anything by going through security, I mean, yeah, we go through security here, but I look at the transparency issue, transparency issue, now, what I would be for, is I'd be for trying it for six, you know, trying it for six months, and then making the evaluation, if it is something that will, will permanently, permanently work, because I know a lot of people say that, you know, just trying to come up the ramp, and even though we have a good handicap ramp, we have good security, they have, some of them have to get in the elevator, come down, you know, come downstairs and everything, and a lot of them, no, I've never witnessed the problem with parking myself, I've always found that it, that with the parking lot there that is for City Hall, that, I haven't found, but I'm not saying there isn't one, I've just never witnessed it myself, but I, I would like to see at least staff look at what it would take, and come back to us, with saying, if we were to do this, this is the cause effect, this is what it would cause us to do, this is what we'd have to do, these are the benefits, these are now, because I think for that transparency and the size of the room, I'm, I, I think myself personally, it's a good idea, of course, you know me, I've always thought, I've always thought it was a good idea.
You have a special place in your heart for that area.
Well, I do, because I think it's very, well, to let people sign in outside, outside the meeting, and put information outside the meeting.
You're right.
So I, I just, I just think it's a good idea. Now, what, city may not allow, want us to do it, and do it, who knows? We don't know that.
So I have a question about transparency, I'm not sure what isn't transparent about the venue that we have now.
Well, I think people just don't feel, a lot of people, just because of their condition or their, their physical condition, a lot of people just don't feel secure coming to the meeting down here. I don't think it's all with security, Mary, I think it's just to go up, to go up a ramp, fly the stairs, and or up a ramp, come in, go down, go down a flight of stairs, or go down an elevator, and then have a 10-minute meeting, and then turn around and have to go back up the elevator and down the ramp, I just don't, I personally just don't think it, it works as well, but that's just my, that's just my opinion. But I, if I proposed it, I wouldn't be proposing a permanent solution, I'd be trying to see how, see how it works, we might find out it doesn't work at all, we might find out you're, you're exactly right, and it doesn't work at all. But I... But I, I don't think if we don't, if we don't try it, we won't, we won't know. So.
Perhaps, may I, do you have a?
No, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, it's like, I, all of my life, I've been trying to not interrupt people, so. Um, the, uh, one thing I, I have observed with you, I, I'm not sure if it was Commissioner Starett or not, but um, you said, well, we're meeting over in room 32 from now on for informal, um, on the Tuesday. And I noticed that the attendance um, greatly exceeded almost immediately the, the space in the Fenton House. Um, and, uh, I'm reminded, I, as a kid, I was forced to watch, uh, what's the movie about Field of Dreams? Um, and the, the.
Build it and they will come.
Uh, the cornfield was whispering, build it and they will come. And I thought it was kind of appropriate for here that, um, you, you made the move to have us be here on Tuesdays. And almost instantly, there were more people than could fit in the Fenton House office. I thought, wow, that's pretty great. It was just like magic.
Well, what was happening at the time was that I think you were, you were there, you were, we had issues that were, people were coming without understanding that this was not a, a forum for public input. But, so there were people who were just showing up and we couldn't do it.
Right.
And then we said, watch what happens as soon as we go over to room 32. We're not going to get a lot of people. And we typically don't have a lot of people come to them. And then, so we'll just have to see. But I think this is a lot more comfortable. But I also think that this should be, this should be our, our place. This is where we know the commissioners are going to be meeting here. And it does tend to make it a little bit, um, I don't know, confusing that now we're in here and now we're here, whereas as, at, at least if we can, because typically, people don't come to Tuesday's meeting. That was informal and that was a work session for the commissioners. And there weren't ever people there.
Mm-hmm. People found out, though, that this is when we talk about everything.
And we do a lot of talk about.
Yes. Like, um, there's a guy in the back who is like, that's where they talk about everything.
That guy has a name.
Yeah, that guy.
That guy has a name.
Hello, Ramsey.
No, you can't.
I think that we actually all know you, so it's not, um, but as a person who has spent a lot of time out in the, um, the light blue chairs with the black, um, I, I've sat through lots of meetings out there, um, over a long, long meetings. And I could tell you, it is a lot more comfortable for the county residents who want to be present, um, or who think they might be, want to be present, um, in the civic hall. Um, that trail hearing, um, or the solar hearings last year that went hours and hours and hours, people could get up, move around. And it was much more comfortable there.
I agree on those types of, of, those are, we don't have those types of meetings with that much attendance. But on a weekly basis where our meetings are three minutes long, to get in the car or to, to walk over there, whereas this is boom, three minutes, we're back across. It's just, I feel like it's going to add time, uh, and be a little more cumbersome. But the big ones, I think, should be there.
Well, it is my intention that the meetings, uh, we talk about more, as you can see from the list.
Yeah, I, I think, I, you know, I really think that, again, I, I think, I mix, I think it's a great idea. But I'd, I'd like to do a little bit more research and see what, and have staff.
Yeah.
Work with the city man, city manager and staff and see exactly what the pros and cons are, you know, because we might look at after all those pros and cons and say, it's not worth doing. And then if we do it, do it for three or four months and, and see if it works. Because we're not tied into, anything I know in Salem, uh, the Marion County Board of Commissioners, the city of Salem, um, Chariots and the Shemekah Board, they all meet in the exact same place downtown. All four groups meet in the same, the same chamber, so they didn't have to have separate ones. So. So I guess I'm definitely willing to try it. Go ahead.
Would it be possible to loop in the Oregon Judicial Department and, um, the, uh, the DA's office as well in the conversation? Because they, they envy our real estate here. I just know that, so.
Well, I, I would just add that we should probably look and, you know, the availability of the space and if staff's able to investigate that, that before.
Oh, yeah. Before talking.
Before, you know, um, that we're saying that this space is available to use.
Yeah.
You know, or we lose this and then it doesn't work.
I agree with you.
Right. I think that's a good point. Yeah, that the, the order of operations.
Cost too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, hearing, um, you know, I, I can get with IT and facilities and, and I can connect with the city and find out the, you know, I don't know if there's going to be a cost associated with using the space. I don't know as far as the network compatibility, the, I can, I can start exploring some of that. Um, adding to it, I also just want to, you know, this was, this room was another one of the projects that were on the capital list.
Oh, right.
And what, hearing that this came up, it's, I've told Joe and Shane to, um, to put the brakes on, you know.
Which is wise decision.
Uh, because we were looking at needing to update our recording software and, uh, and if we were going to do other improvements to this space, it doesn't make any sense to, to spend the money on the improvement if we're potentially exploring relocating elsewhere. So. Um, so I'll connect with Jeff at the city and, uh, and get more information and come back and report.
Great. Thank you for your willingness to do that.
Oh, the other thing I, that probably, one thing to keep in mind too, is with our meetings on Thursdays. And if we were relocated over there during the summer months, the farmer's market usually runs on Thursdays as well.
So there's parking.
Parking.
So just something to.
That is a consideration.
Just something that just hit me.
Yeah.
But I heard they're moving the farmer's market again.
Oh. Okay.
Where are they moving it to?
They're going to move it, I guess, to Evans, part of the parking lot behind the old penny store in Evans, Evans Street, to get it more into the, down into the center of, center of him.
That's my, where my parking permit is.
Used to be.
No, I have a parking permit for that parking lot, actually.
Ken, I think we have a consensus that, that our administrator will go back and study that.
Did you also want to talk about, at this time, taking some meetings on the road? Isn't that something that I also seen in your request for, I didn't know if that was a different discussion.
Oh, yeah. Well, um, thank you for reminding me, because I wanted to, um, Commissioner Starett, a long time ago had mentioned to me that sometimes we have our board meetings at, um, council chan, or at city council chambers. Or is it town hall? So it's not our formal meetings.
No, we don't.
So when I was chair last time and this last time, I had said that, you know, the criticism is, is that we're not, we're not available, we're not out there. So I said, okay, let's take the show on the road. And we would go to city council meetings. When they met, we would have a town hall prior to that. And then if there were city councils issues, we would just be there for that. And I think the places where there was the biggest turnout was Sheridan and Newburgh.
We had, what, two in Yam Hill, I think, wasn't it?
And you'll have a cou, a couple of people. No, there were, there was a handful of.
And Newburgh was huge.
And Newburgh was huge, Sheridan was huge, McMinnville, Zippo. And we had, um.
Oh, I was at the McMinnville one. Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so one, one person was there.
Oh, that's right. I was the one.
You were the one. We had, uh, we had a handful of people in Yam Hill, uh, Dayton. So really, we were taking that on the road. And what we were finding is, is that even when we were after hours, not at 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
And we were right there in their neighborhood, people typically don't come to these types of meetings unless they have a, an issue.
A particular issue.
A particular issue. So that's about taking the county commissioner meetings on the road might be problematic for people who are used to us meeting here.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would, I think we should continue the town hall meetings, the way we do them. I'd like to see them done more than once a month in each city. But like Mary said, we have those cities that nobody shows up. So I don't know if you do one combined for Yam Hill and Carlton, combine one for combined Sheridan and Wilhelmina, or what you do. But, uh, I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. And then I was just meeting with the, along similar lines, um, I went to an inter, I introduced myself to the tribal council. And, um, uh, John George brought up, um, that you, you used to do, um, combined meetings or some, he didn't give specifics of, but he thought that he, so the tribal council, um, but he couldn't remember how long ago. And so I wanted to bring that.
John has a little trouble remembering.
We still do the, uh, the schedules is that we would, what we would do is trade off. We'd go out there for lunch, they'd come in here and we'd host them for lunch. So we've been doing that, uh, every year. And now I believe it's our turn, because we were out there, we were out there last.
Okay.
So it's our turn. And we do have that on a regular basis.
Okay. Great. I can check it off my list. That was easy.
I think part of my opinion, if every three months, which is every 12 meetings on an average or whatever, I can see having a commission meeting, maybe at Newburgh Public Safety Building to give those people. But other than that, to go commission meetings for every city, I, I can't. So, but Newburgh is big enough. If they have enough hot topic issues over there, then it may be worth us looking at that in the future.
We could put some on the agenda.
Yeah.
We'll give them some. Okay, so Ken, I think you have your direction on that. I know Mary's got a meeting, so let's move, for I want to be sensitive of her time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The next one is discussion of the invocations at formal meetings. Casey, that's yours.
And Commissioner Starett, when did you need to be out of here?
Oh, I'm fine. I'm, they're used to me being late. I think we're actually.
I think we're moving through, so.
We're fine. Amazingly.
Um, so I just wanted to, um, bring up that I've had a lot of people, um, talk to me about being uncomfortable, uh, with being present or feeling like it's, um, it, the invocation at formal meetings takes away from the time of doing the work of the, of the Board of Commissioners in the county. And so I was, I wanted to propose that it, um, uh, we not do it anymore. And that's as a deeply religious person, um, who's very comfortable with prayer of all kinds. Um, so wanted to put that.
All right, I'll turn it over to you.
I just wanted to say, you know, a couple of things, just in terms of the history of it here in, in our county. We, uh, when that Supreme Court decision came down that would allow, uh, public bodies to have prayer at the beginning of their, or at their meetings.
Yeah.
We knew that there were certain parameters where we, there's no proselytizing and we can't advance any one particular, uh, religion. We've had people from Freedom From Religion come and do a, an invocation, or I guess you wouldn't call it an invocation, do a.
Devocation, maybe.
A devocation.
Exclamation.
We've had, we've had, uh, people come who express an interest in being here. But I was thinking about, well, why is it that it seems to be a Christian invocation? And then I thought, okay, well, we're in a county of 104,000 people. We've got, uh, perhaps upwards of 200 churches. We don't have any mosques. We don't have any synagogues. We don't have any ashrams. So it isn't that we are excluding. It is that, that this is a region which is traditionally has had, heritage-wise, had that, that, that Christian mooring. And their faith shows it in the number of churches, whether they attend them or not. And then I just look at the fact that since 1777, um, Congress has had a, a, um, a paid chaplain do an invocation at the beginning of their sessions. It's been going on since 1777. So we've been doing this for 220 years. And suddenly now people are uncomfortable. Um, are they uncomfortable because we pledge allegiance? Are we uncomfortable because, you know, someone's level of discomfort should not take away from the fact that, you know, one of the things I see in here every week is that another person doing an invocation will tell us about the work they're doing in the community. The faith community is doing the heavy lifting with our kids, our seniors, people on the street, our addicts. And we will take their work and their message, which informs and inspires their work. And yet to have them come and to ask a blessing on this meeting somehow seem, makes them uncomfortable. But it's not uncomfortable for us to have them go out in our community and do work that nobody else wants to do.
Perhaps I could, uh, make a response.
You can make a response.
Which is that I want to say that, um, I'm uncomfortable with it. And I want us to do the, the, the business that's on the agenda.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you a little bit about my family. Mary's exactly right. And I think it was May of 2014 when the Supreme Court ruled, you know, that in front of legislative meetings, prayers work. And they set the, got all real tight guidelines of what you could say. But, you know, the Supreme Court voted on a five to four split vote. So they couldn't really even hardly decide what was right or what wasn't wrong. And I, I guess the issue I have in our, uh, pluralistic society today, you know, if it makes one person, uh, who listens to a prayer in front of us, uh, gives them a feeling of uneasiness or isolation, or they feel excluded because they may not like to listen, listen to prayer, you know, and prayer's always divided communities along religious lines. And even though we can't say, well, we are predominantly Christian, you know, and that's the way Yam Hill County is. And so that's permissible. But what I keep asking myself, right, because it's permissible, does that just necessarily mean it's right? And that's why I kind of feel compromised, compromised sometime, because I believe that politics and, and government business is politics and government business. And worship is worship. You can worship in, worship in your church, you can worship in your home, you can worship a lot of things. And a lot of people talk about politics in their home, but the decision-making body, I think, is it's political. And I feel very compromised in it. And it's not because I don't believe in God, because I do. And I worship my, I worship my own way. I don't go to church every single week, but I worship my own way. I just feel if one person of our citizens feels uncomfortable because we're doing a prayer, or they feel excluded for some reason, then, then we shouldn't do it. It has nothing to do whether it's, whether it's legal or not. It really has to do with, to me, whether it's right or not.
So you know that the people of the Jehovah's Witness faith, faith are not comfortable with pledging allegiance to the flag.
Mm-hmm.
So if someone who is a practicing Jehovah's Witness comes into our meeting and expresses the fact that it makes them uncomfortable to pledge allegiance to the flag, would that then be, by that reasoning, we would no longer pledge allegiance to the flag? You have a picture on your desk of you and your wife. Someone who's been divorced might look at that and that might make them uncomfortable because you're still married. I mean, we could really, by extension, you know, you walk up the steps of the Supreme Court and what do you see? You hold a picture of Moses holding the Ten Commandments. So the Judeo-Christian, um, ethic has informed our, our nation from day one. And so to say it makes us feel uncomfortable, where do we end when, when something makes them feel, someone feel uncomfortable?
I really, well, maybe I don't need to speak into it. I really appreciate your comments. And I also want to make sure that it's clear that I also really appreciate that the work of the churches in our community. Um, I, I feel like they step up every day on so many challenges. And sometimes, uh, maybe the county should be stepping up more. But I'm glad that it, in many cases, has, has started with churches in our community. Um, I, I would like to point out that at the informal session, we don't do a pledge of allegiance. And at the informal session, we don't do an invocation. Um, and I'm sure that there's a, there's lots of reasons historically why we did that. Uh, but we clearly feel comfortable, if we're going to talk about comfort and discomfort, we clearly feel comfortable with not doing, um, prayers sometimes when we're all just the only ones here. But we aren't, we're, we're doing them when we hope that lots of people will come and join us and provide their thoughts. Um, and so I just, I, I thought that was, it was interesting to realize that we don't have that on the agenda for today, the flag salute and invocation.
And we have lots of meetings. Um, we don't do, when it's called formal session is because, you know, there, um, there really is something to be said for the fact that, even though I, I don't feel like us being up here is necessarily the most comfortable thing for citizens. And you and I have talked about this.
We have talked about this.
And I've always felt that it would be, uh, more comfortable for us to sit at a table with people, because this, this sort of confers this hierarchy, which is, is disturbing on many levels. But I think the reason we, we do this is because it's easier for people to see us and hear us.
Right.
That being said, this is a, a formal session on Thursdays where we have more of the, the pomp and circumstance, if you will, and more of the trappings of a formal process. And we dress differently, our demeanor is different. And, uh, we have lots of meetings during the day where we don't stand up and pledge allegiance. I just think, especially now, for us to say something that we've done for uh, 220 years in this country, especially with what we're facing in terms of maybe needing guidance and needing blessing, to take that away is not doing us any favors in this county. That's how I personally feel.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for those words.
Yeah, Mary, I, I, yeah, I, I definitely agree with you. Since 1777, we've been doing this in Yam Hill County. We've been doing it for six years now, I think, since the beginning of Commissioner Springer's first term, when he brought it up and wanted to do it. And I got to thinking, well, if we did do it, it was good up until that time, were we doing everything wrong up until that time? Because we didn't, we didn't do it.
No, it was the Supreme Court decision that precipitated the, us doing it.
That was in 14. That was only four years, that was only four years ago. So that was, Commissioner Springer brought it up before the Supreme Court ruling was made. So I, I just, I just don't feel comfortable doing it.
Solution, um, which, um, is that if, um, I've noticed that we all tend to be here a little early. Uh, what do you think about the three of us and some member of the religious community, um, you know, praying together? Not during the formal, um, moments of trapping and the gavel coming down. Because I would be very comfortable with that. Of the three of us with some. Because I would be very comfortable with that, of the three of us with somebody, and we're elected officials. The other people who are here from the county, they don't get a choice in that they have to be here, who work for the county. Of the three of us and a clergy member, not on the microphone.
But we don't have, if you, if you notice, it's not a clergy member. It's someone who is, I mean, anybody.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you for clarifying the language. I appreciate it.
Anybody.
Anybody who wants to.
And there is no...
Yeah.
You're a clergy member, you can pray.
Right.
I, I think, and I, and I appreciate that compromise. I, I think my, my preference, and I, again, we know I can count, that, that doing it as, as, as if it is part of the, our, our meeting just confers a different spirit on what we're about to do. But I would not, if, if it's got to be that or nothing...
I would be really interested in that, so...
I think that's something we can...
Yeah, but I don't know if this guy would do invitations.
Even if I was, do you do it outside? Because you're going to have a lot of people sitting in here before.
Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly.
I would probably offer a different compromise. And I did some research on this after I saw this.
It just said discussion.
Some jurisdictions have gone, is they've had, they've had a minute or two minutes of silence for reflection before you do the flag. If you want to pray, you can pray. If you want to, on your own, if you want to think about how your day's going to go, you can do, do that. But just have a minute or two of reflection before the meeting starts. And you could do with that minute or two whatever you, whatever you want to do, you know, so that would be mine, but...
And, and so, and you're sitting there thinking about your list at Fred Meyer's. Okay, I need to pick a, but...
For some people, that's their prayer.
For some people, that's their prayer. But the other thing is, I think about the tone that it says. I, I think about lately, some of the people who've come in here, and the stuff they've said has been so spot on for what was going on. Jason Willoughby said afterwards, he sent me an email, and he says, he had prayed that all of us would find a way to deal with our differences in, in a civil way. He sent me an email after that. He said, "My prayer was answered. I couldn't believe how hard you all worked at, at having a peaceful discourse." And he says, "It was just amazing." But I think the tone is set by just that, that, that inspiring message, but I'll stop now.
I appreciate that idea, and I'm, I'm happy to, to move to that.
Well, I think we're going to have to probably sooner or later make a decision what we, what we do. I'm not for continuing it the way we do it, the way we do it now.
I don't know if we have to make a decision. I feel like we, you and I talked about it.
Because if it doesn't, it just drops. I mean, because we don't, it's not confirmed.
I don't remember how it was put in, put in place before, but we can double check that.
I know it wasn't a board order. It wasn't, because it wasn't in 900.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm looking at the Procedures Ordinance, and I don't know if there was...
No, it's not there.
I believe it was maybe simply something that the, the board chose as, you know, a group to, to, to begin doing. But we can double check.
Is that something that would have to go on the non-consent agenda, or would that be something to vote on?
Again, we're not sure that it actually was instituted through any kind of formal action. In which case, if it wasn't, it may not need to be stopped through any formal action, other than a discussion of the board and, you know, an agreement that it's no longer going to be continuing. And then if, if, if there is a board member who would like to see it continue, they could maybe make a statement about that at, at formal session. Or you could certainly call for, for it to come to a vote, too. You know, you can, you can make a motion that way as well.
I should note that I have asked people through the end of February to come, and there are a variety of people from the community who are scheduled to come. And I would, would hate to have to say them, "Okay, now, don't come." So that's just where I'm at with having commitments from people.
I'm fine going through them.
I try to always fulfill my commitments, so I appreciate, you know, like, I understand how you feel then. Of like, oh, yeah, so I, that's, that's something I'm totally...
I have no problem going through the end of February. I don't have any problem with that at all.
So I guess we'd have to, maybe on Thursday, actually have a formal vote as to what, so that we can say...
Or we could just say no more.
Yeah, I don't think that there is...
I don't know that you need to, if, if, if you would like to have a formal vote.
Well, I guess it's clear that I can.
Mary, I know where the numbers are. She knows where the numbers drop.
Yeah.
Which is why...
This is why we can't have a nine commissioner board, because you're like, oh, four, five?
Well, then I would just make the last comment, though, because Mary is, I think you said you were done. I'll just make the last comment that we honor Mary's commitments through the end of, through the end of February.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. And thank you for all those good thoughts. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah.
Very, very well said. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Department Director Evaluation Process.
So I put that on because I didn't see it in the ordinance that governs Ken's, the county administrator role. And I wanted to put forward that I, I think it's really...
It's in the contract, isn't it, Ken?
Okay, it's not, it's not in the ordinance. Okay.
No, it's in the contract.
Okay, that's good. I, I just wanted to put forward publicly that I think it's really important, and that I want to support you in that, in whatever way I can.
It's the last month.
And that's the entirety of my discussion.
It's in February, isn't it?
For my evaluation and Christian's evaluation.
It's in February. I mean, in December.
I don't know that you're talking about the same things.
No.
Right.
You're talking about county department heads.
Correct.
Oh, county department.
And that's his job.
Right. Right. And I didn't see it in the ordinance, because I guess I, I don't, I have not been made privy to his contract. But I can go look for it again.
No, no, it won't be in his contract.
No, no, it's not. It's not.
But our, Ken, don't our personnel policies state that the managers in this, I mean, basically, everybody will be, will be evaluated? You'd evaluate your management team, and then somebody like Silas evaluates his supervisors and so on and so forth down low. And that's in our personnel policy.
We do have, we do have policy and, you know, that governs the evaluations and the frequency and how often that should be occurring.
And I take it they are, they are, they are done all the time? And we verify that they're done?
As the administrator for two weeks now, going on my third week, I can...
Well, there you go. Scaping out, escaping out again. But I think the question about that is, is those are, those are their cases? Because I had the same question. It's just a matter of HR and Ken ensuring that they get done. I mean, so we have those policies in play.
You know, and I do find, you know, as, as the, you know, the administrator, when it comes to the department heads, and there is value with doing the evaluations, I think it's, it's part of being an effective leader and a manager over a team, is you have to, you know, admittedly, you know, I put more value in the day-to-day conversation more than I do in the annual evaluation, because no evaluation should ever come as a surprise by the time we get to that at the end of the year. And if it does, you know, I'm not doing my job very well in my day-to-day communications with that, with that person, so... You know, but that being said, we do have some county policy guidance with the appointed department heads. They fall under the commit, my authority as per the, the county administrator ordinance and...
And what I was talking about, Casey, I think it's up to us as commissioners, because of his contract.
Oh, yeah.
It's up to us to ensure that he gets evaluated every December, because it is in his contract. Because I'd hate something to happen, then all of a sudden Ken have to say, "Well, you know, you never gave me my evaluation. It's called in my contract." You know, not that Ken, you'd ever say that.
No, I would not.
I just really appreciate those performance evaluations, so I wanted to make sure that you knew that, at least I, whoa, there's two microphones here. Value it, and I'm happy to help you whenever.
And I'll tell you one thing.
I'll try not to give you as many than assignments, so that you have the time.
Casey, I can tell, I can tell you, Casey, from the last two years since I've been in, I have been so pleased with the direction and the work that not only Laura, but what, especially Desiree, what she's done with our Human Resources Department and additional staff, the risk manager. Our Human Resources Department has done an excellent job. I'd put them up against probably mostly Human Resources Departments around. They do a great job. Nothing, you know, no, they do, they do a really good job, so...
I think so.
Okay, so that clarifies that. One more, Casey, you've, you're past your limit.
It is, I know. That's right. I'm, I'm hearing that Ken's going to give me a limit soon, so...
That's why we're talking about having a work session scheduled.
That's right.
The, the Board Procedures Ordinance says that any commissioner at any time can bring agenda items forward, so I would never put a limit or say that, no, it's up to your fellow commissioners.
You have to answer to Mary.
I just want to clarify.
So well.
You just have to make sure Mary and I understand it.
Yes, I, I look at 900 about five times a week right now, so...
How do we do this? Okay, Casey, your last one then.
Yes, so I have been wondering about what it would take to divert garbage from Riverbend to another landfill in the unincorporated county. And so I asked Recology if they could give us a sense, one, of how they can help reduce people's garbage bills by taking recycling out of the garbage. Because for people in rural areas, it's very challenging to do things like recycle glass. Like, we have to collect it and bring it in here. And even then, I'm actually not really sure.
Not for the city.
Yeah, exactly.
Although I have four, I have four trucks that come by my house.
Yeah, I'm not even sure if I'm actually supposed to use the Recology facility here in town. And so I, I asked Carl Peters at Recology whether he'd be willing to kind of give us an update of what services they could provide. Just to like, a preliminary conversation.
Yeah, let me, let me ask Christian a counsel question. Now, any, any change we would have to make, we have, for the non-incorporated areas, we have, I take it, a, a franchise agreement with both, both Waste Management and Recology?
Correct.
So any additional things we would want them to do, or we would have to renegotiate those franchise agreements?
Well, if we were going to change the franchise agreements, correct. I'm not sure that's what I heard Commissioner Kula discussing.
No, it was a separate, I just asked that question, so... But like, we can't, we can't tell Waste Management, under the franchise agreement right now, to not take any trash to, like, Riverbend.
That's not a restriction that's currently in their franchise.
Let's say that's not in there. So we, we just couldn't do that. But I think, Casey, the thing of having them come and say what's possible, I don't have any problem.
Okay, I, I just want to find out, you know, it was something that I ran on was, let's, not really because of my own thing, but because people in Yamhill County told me over and over again that they wanted the landfill to be done. And so I'm trying to respect their wishes and find out what we can do. But it's, you know, I need to know what they can do first.
I don't have, and we probably also need to know what Waste Management could do, because they have, they have part of the rural fran, the rural franchise.
Right, right.
So Recology may be able to do some things that they can't, or vice versa.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So I don't, I don't mind.
So I wanted to bring it up so that you could have some thoughts on it.
Yeah, Carl, Carl could probably do a pretty good presentation.
I'm not clear on what it is that you're asking them to tell us?
Yeah, so I can restate it. I, I started by saying that I wanted to find out from Recology, one, what it would, if they can divert their unincorporated county garbage from Riverbend landfill, because right now, unincorporated Yamhill County, as far as I understand, goes to, to Riverbend.
From Recology?
From Recology. And then, two, well, yeah, from Recology, yeah.
I thought it went to the transfer station.
As far as I understand, it doesn't. But then, two, if there is, if there would be a cost for, that would be incurred by having it go somewhere else, because Riverbend is obviously very close, what other services could they provide that would reduce, potentially reduce people's garbage bills? And it was stating that for me, I know that it's very onerous to get glass recycled when you're in a rural area.
Well, move to McMinville.
Right, exactly. But I ran as a rural resident. I can't. And I have a farm, too. Because right now, our, in rural, the rural county, glass is highly recyclable, but we have to bring it somewhere, which is a barrier, you know?
Well, same with me, and, and, and we have Waste Management that won't even go to my house. We have to take it to the top of the road. So it's just sort of logistics and that type of thing. And, yeah, I'd be interested in information.
But I think we can, I think it might be possible for people to reuse their garbage bills if they're not, if there's more things that they can recycle or can compost, so...
I think it's a good, I don't mind getting a presentation, but it's not, wouldn't be my really high priority, looking at February or March, because with all the work sessions we're talking about having, but...
I wonder if it was, it would be information that you could get from them and share with us in an email. We find out a lot of times.
I will send it to this guy.
Meetings don't have to be, sometimes a meeting can be handled in an email.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Well, something else to consider, too.
Thank you for that, wow.
They, both Recology and Waste Management have historically come before the board, generally once a year, around the time where they're presenting their rates for the next year.
Right.
If you gave them enough lead time, perhaps they could come to that meeting prepared to discuss a little bit about some of these other issues. Or if you wanted to have a meeting sooner, you could certainly schedule a time for them to come.
Do you know whenabouts their rate areas?
May-June timeframe, generally. I could check with our new solid waste coordinator.
And I know that having come to the SWAC meetings for, when it was, I was liaison, that, there would be a lot of discussion. I wonder if we could get SWAC involved to...
Dave Larmouth and Nick Godfrey probably could be involved, but...
To, to discuss it at, at a SWAC meeting as an agenda item, and then make recommendation to the commissioners, because they are all totally up to speed on that whole, they know the answers just like that.
They've got the words, and they've got the roots, and they know the...
Well, I do know that the SWAC Committee, based on last week's meeting, is going to be recommending some bylaws changes and everything to all of SWAC. So, you know, what I'll let them do is get through that process first, because they've, Ashley, who's done a great job, has recognized that there's some changes that really need to be made to SWAC, and I agree with most of the changes she wants to make. But I'd say let them get through that process, and then maybe we look at SWAC for due to those sorts of things.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, that that would be a good group for looking at it, like, what, what possibilities are out there?
But let them know, you know, let them get through what they want to get through now, now first, so...
So if I'm hearing there's no action that's going to be taken or anything scheduled at this point...
Yeah, we can, we can go to SWAC with a suggestion of a board, of a business item, or an item.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just want to clarify.
No emails to Ken that are going to go to you, by the way. I've learned.
Okay, we, I think we've gone through our long agenda. We don't have any executive session scheduled for today. Mary, do you have any updates?
Just real quick, we had our task force from Strategic Doing on the unaccompanied homeless youth. And we're moving forward with trying to figure out how we'll get the church, First Christian, and a collaboration with Youth Outreach to bring something to McMinville. We're still working on that. Also, Representative Noble has a placeholder bill which would deal with the squatter issue as it relates to a public health concern. And that basically will give us a little more leeway. We'll see how that goes. And, and I think that's it.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I was contacted by more people about the squatter issue, and so it was fresh in my mind.
You have anything, Casey?
Yes, so I wanted to mention that I went to the, to county, my first county college. And I was, there was stuff that I knew and stuff that I knew, and then all of a sudden I got to the, "Oh, this is awesome." I don't know if this is your experience, too. Maybe it was. Probably different things. But for me, there was a presentation by the Director of OSU Extension's Diversity Inclusion Equity Program. And she kept hammering over and over again that diversity means innovation, and I really appreciated that. And that's why I, I really appreciated your bringing up those, like, more bullet points. Because I really feel like when you get more brains and minds and hearts in a room, you do get a better outcome for a community. But it was really great to hear her hammer that one home.
You haven't heard anything yet. Wait till you're done with county college.
And then Rob Bovette, the county general counselor, yeah, general counsel.
General Counsel for AOC.
For AOC, said that the future is in all county documents that aren't privileged being on websites. And I thought, whoa. He said, "I know. Watch out."
I'd be interested in that, the legislative...
I was like, I'm going to take it that he knows what he's talking about.
He does. He's a pretty good attorney.
Yeah. And then I wanted to bring it up, I know that Director of Health and Human Services looped you in, or like, made you aware, that I had a, I met with a group about housing in the county. And I appreciated, because I was like, I can't tell her myself.
Yeah, you can.
Can I?
If, if we're not voting on something, I mean...
Or we won't be vote, that's, Ken and I had that conversation.
We're not voting. If you, if you're having...
For the record, why don't I just use this opportunity to remind you, if you're not discussing or deliberating towards a topic that's on the agenda or likely to come before the board on the agenda item, then, then you're probably okay. The trick is, is to know when, when, or whether or not something will likely come before the board.
The foreseeability.
But it's the discussion and/or deliberating, or, or, or voting, right? You can't, you can't obviously predetermine the outcome. So it's the discussion and/or the deliberation, which is where things can get a little bit tricky.
Right.
So really what it is, it's like, I was taught by Sean O'Day at CAG. It's if you have any doubt that it's going to be a decision in the near future, and define near, I don't know what... know what near is, but if you know it's going to be one in the decision in the future, you may have to make a decision. As a legislative body on, you shouldn't be talking about it.
And so having a group of people get together and working on an issue that we're working on as a county initiative or something, isn't really something we're voting on, so.
Great, you can do that.
Great. And then I wanted to put out there that I was hearing that SNAP benefits for February went out to people in January, kind of early, and that it's just on my radar that we, as a county, may need to be thinking about what's going to happen for folks in the next month and two months, just with the federal shutdown ongoing, so. I wanted to put that out there so we could start keeping in mind.
Okay. I just, you got anything else, Casey? I just have a couple things. Had some email from the sheriff, as you know, we have quite a few in the county on roads derelict RVs and derelict trailers. We have one up on Gopher Valley Road that all three providers declined to tow it or declined to store it. This is going to be a much, much bigger issue as they abandon them. I think what's going to happen to happen is, if the sheriff inspects them and they don't have any contamination or anything like that, I don't see any way we're ever going to remove those, except by somehow either get our public works or somebody involved. Storage, I don't have, or disposal, I don't have the faintest clue, but they have public works tow them off of the, off of the road. So I told the sheriff to get ahold of John and copy, copy you in on that, Casey, to see what we're going to do with these, because this one on, the one up on Gopher Valley, when I went up and looked at it, it's a big, it's not your average little 20-foot travel trailer. It must be 36, 38 feet, sitting on the side of the road, sitting on the road.
Do you know, I'm not sure why it was that the towing companies declined to tow it? Was there some risk involved, or was it a vehicle?
They're afraid, they're afraid, once they tow it, if the home turns out to be contaminated or there's a problem with contamination, then they're going to be stuck with the cost of trying to get it.
These are vehicles that are being removed for health and safety reasons, because they're in the right of way, or they're blocking the road?
These are things that people just took up there and they just dropped, and hitched them, and they just dropped them.
Think they're in the right of way.
I think they must be.
They're in the right of way.
Sheriff's involved generally, that's why.
Yeah.
Issues.
These particular ones are in the right of way. They're not on private property.
They're in the right of way.
They're in the right of way.
Yeah, so maybe it's something to, to, to break discussions with the towers to see if there's a way to help facilitate them.
Yeah, well, one tower couldn't tow it because it was out of his jurisdiction. Most towers, the other two required, this one on Gopher Valley, it was $1,000 to tow it, and then a minimum fee of $3,000 to store it. So there's $4,000 for a trailer that's probably not worth $500.
Yeah, it really can be expensive, without.
So, but that will, that topic will be coming in front of us. The only other thing I have is, and I'm sure Mary's aware of it, Casey, and you may not be aware of it, that we may want to look at either modifying or rescinding or reactivating it back in Board Order 09-630, I think it is. The county actually formed a ending homeless task force, and I don't know what, it's still in existence. It's never been, Riverbend, it's just never been for, since, for the last few years, for the whole task force, because there's when they meet, it's definition in that board order, how often they meet, when, when they meet, who will be a member of it. So I think under the auspices of what you guys are doing, that it might not be a good to either modify that particular board order that ordained that and bring it up to date so we have something, or if we're going to do something else to rescind that particular board order.
He probably knows.
And I would just say, yeah, that was, that was something that was put into effect, and it was one of those things that it happened, it didn't happen. But lately, because we have so much interest, we've got these various groups working on it, I think we, we, I don't see the need for another group to meet, because we're already, this train has left the station, and we're all working on it in different capacities. So to have an actual county task force, we are working on it in our various different, you know, areas.
Well, and I'd probably propose that, and I'm sure there's others like this, too, that, so it's not on the books that we take some kind of action to rescind that board order, so then we don't have to worry about having it as a board order and as a committee, because it's still in our committee, all three of the committee books we got still shows as a committee. It's in there showing as a committee, so. And I, I'm one of those, if we have committees that aren't inactive for some reason, or they've been done away with by House action or Senate action or the county's own action,